Trustee Poston?
I didn't hear anything.
Anything, okay.
I don't think.
All right.
I'll double check.
Can you hear us Sheila?
Yes, I can.
All right, the time is 7:05 PM and I will call this meeting to order, maybe we have roll call please.
Mayor Riechel?
Here.
Pro Tem Handerhan?
Here.
Trustee Brittenall?
Here.
Trustee Klaassen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Poston? Trustee Seifert?
Here.
Maybe rise for the Pledge of Allegiance any moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice of all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons designed to make public comments on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands at the moment.
Thank you.
No one signed in, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody signed in, okay. Is anyone here in the public, here for public comments, for all agenda items? Agenda items, okay, sounds good. All right, then we will move right along. Next item is a consent agenda and it only contains the minutes of the February 12th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion or discuss that?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Klaassen, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Not here.
Saying none, okay. How about agenda changes by staff or the board?
I would like to maybe have just a quick conversation about some kind of a letter supporting not moving the mail sorting from Grand Junction to Denver. I think the town, I think it would impact the area. It has some adverse impacts on that and something that we could definitely, I mean, it wouldn't have to be a long discussion, but just maybe having staff draft some kind of a letter to send to the powers that be on that, letting them know that we don't, we stand with Grand Junction, whatever, to keep it down that way. Because I think that moving it to Denver, it does make sense to me to have our mail go from here across I-70 and then back with the things that can happen sometimes with that.
If everyone's okay, do you just want to have this discussion right now? I don't see it going too long.
Sure.
I agree, we want to send a letter with our support of leaving it in Grand Junction.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
Easy.
Is that enough direction Jeff?
Got it. I think we got it.
How about a conversation on an update about our code enforcement and numbers that have accumulated so far this year?
That's coming up in the next meeting, I believe.
Good enough.
We have a presentation coming up for that.
For that, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, can you wait till the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, easy enough. All right, any agenda changes by staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else from the board?
Not here.
All right. Then we will move right along to Resolution Number 11, Series 2024. A resolution of the Board of Trustees appointing James Mann as the interim Town Administrator of the Town of Silt, Colorado, and the approval of a contract agreement.
Okay. Thank you gentlemen. We have Jim Mann joining us virtually for the meeting tonight, but the resolution is to hire Mr. Mann as a, technically it's a part-time position, but he would be an employee of the Town of Silt on a exempt employee making a certain salary based on bi-weekly salary pay. The hourly rate listed herein on the memo for $80.25 an hour is just demonstrative of what that pay equates on an hourly basis. It's a temporary position, so that's why he's being classified as a part-time employee, but he is a town employee, subject to all part-time benefits. It's meant to be a temporary position such that it's the interim Town Administrator position and it's subject to 30 days' notice. However, it's only subject to a seven-day termination notice by either party once the permanent Town Administrator has been hired for the role. So there, as a part-time employee, he's not eligible for vacation or health insurance, so that's, that was calculated in when negotiating his weekly salary. He also will have the use of the town condominium at the town's expense. And as far as termination severance goes, I already addressed that, but you know, he's at the will of the board with 30 days' notice for, for any reason. Please let us know if you have any questions, but I believe you interviewed Mr. Mann several weeks ago, so he's also present here if you'd like to ask him any questions.
I don't have any questions.
No, that's pretty straightforward, we're disgusted, I can see.
So before you is the resolution to appoint Mr. Mann as the interim Town Manager, Town Administrator, I'm sorry.
Okay, any, any questions?
Mayor, would you? No, I listened, rather watched the interview and learned a lot about you Jim, thank you. You answered a lot of my questions even though I didn't have a chance to ask them. So thanks for that. I have no follow-up questions, I think he's a great fit.
Okay. Just clarification for the board, we had talked about a salary range, the number, the $80, looks like it's above that, but just remember that does include that 7% contribution into his retirement, so.
That's right, because of, that was some back and forth, because he is a, because of the retirement benefit plan that the town has, it's really not something you can make exceptions for, so it only applies to full-time employees. And then there's a vesting period, so it was very challenging to try to put money aside for retirement for Mr. Mann. So we just bolstered the salary based on that.
Makes sense, okay. Okay. And then first day works for you Jim for the 29th? Okay, a little thumbs up, I like it, good.
May I have a few words?
Okay, this is, this is just an action item out of public hearing, so is there any further discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11, Series 2024 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve Resolution Number 11, Series 2024. A resolution of the Board of Trustees appointing James Mann as the interim Town Administrator of the Town of Silt, Colorado, and approval of a contract agreement, and that was seconded by our Mayor Pro Tem Handerhan. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome aboard, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I look forward to working with you all.
All right. Okay. Moving right along then. Next item on the agenda is the Align Multimedia Review and Proposal for 2024 with Katie Mackley. If you guys would like to comment to the table and just state your name and hit us with your presentation.
Nice to see you all, I apologize, I am giving you the analytics report. Thursday I got here before I realized it, so it was not available in your packet.
Thank you.
You are so welcome.
Thanks.
So I am Katie Mackley and
I am Ryan Mackley.
And we are the owners of Align Multimedia and we have been working with the Town of Silt now for a little over a year on a marketing campaign. And we were here at the end of last year, we kind of gave everyone a review of how things had gone. You know, our goal for 2023 was really to create a marketing strategy for the Town of Silt and create a marketing foundation which the Town of Silt had not really had prior to last year. You know, we talked about the, kind of what we did to create that foundation and we refreshed the Discover Silt website, which we all thought turned out really, really well. We created a social media presence for discover silt.com, we started a Discover Silt newsletter. And then we created a photo contest campaign as a way to promote the website and we used the newsletter to promote the campaign to get subscribers for the website. And the campaign went very, very well, actually our analytics on that were very good. If you remember, we said that there was a, you know, surprising number of subscribers through the photo campaign, contest campaign. We also started a shop local campaign as well and completed three shop local videos that we highlighted on the Discover Silt website and promoted through the first newsletter and on social media as well. We featured the whimsical wagon, Wild Roots, and the one in December was Misty's Wild Coffee, excuse me. And that video will actually, we promoted it on social already, but that will go out in the newsletter coming up this week. So we had a wonderful time working with the businesses, felt like, and that was also a really wonderful way that we drove traffic to the website and, you know, got hits on social media and featured your wonderful businesses, which was really, really, I think, a very lovely way to highlight some great things about the Town of Silt. So let's talk about 2024 objectives. Really what we're going to do is just build on the foundation that we've created. So continue marketing to two groups, which is the regional visitor and the local resident. We've been having ongoing conversations with Jeff about what this looks like. I did attend the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership Meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago. Just because Jeff and I were having this conversation about, and I think you all may have done a work session as well, kind of on what you would like to see in terms of, you know, who are we marketing to? And are we building a lifestyle, you know, come live in Silt, start a business in Silt, is that going to be our focus? And we really felt like the work that's being done with the CRV EDP will kind of inform that as well. So it's going to be kind of this collaborative process where we work with, you know, kind of what's happening there, what you guys are envisioning, to kind of take these next steps with the marketing strategy. We will continue obviously posting on social media with the content that we have, posting to the Discover Silt website, continuing with the newsletter. Most recently, we took, we took a little bit of a, we veered off our track a little bit in the last couple of months. Jeff came to me and said, you know, we're going to be doing the State of the Community presentation in March for the chamber and, you know, would Align be able to help us with this? And so we've started creating this fantastic video featuring your staff. And I have to tell you, Ryan and I spent the day with your staff, it was a couple of weeks ago now. And you have the most wonderful staff. I, I cannot tell you, it was such a joy for us to get to spend the day with them. And they are, I think it is rare when you encounter a few people who enjoy their jobs, let alone an entire team, who told us hands down, we love working for the Town of Silt. We love the way we are supported by the trustees, by Jeff. We, it was overwhelming, I was really actually kind of emotional about it. I walked away going, that is just exceptional. So kudos to all of you and to Jeff for creating such a wonderful culture that we are looking forward to highlighting in this video, which will have a dual function. One is obviously to be shown at the State of the Community luncheon, but it will also hopefully help as a recruiting tool as you unfortunately have to fill the shoes of Jeff, who I, people, you know, your staff is incredibly sad that he is leaving. So that is, he has done a wonderful job and hopefully we can use this tool to find another ideal candidate to take his place. So that's what we've been working on for the last couple of months. Moving forward, we will continue with the shop local videos. And then, like I said, work collaboratively on kind of where, where we want, how we're going to hone the content based on what we're seeing. We know that one of the most powerful tools you have in your toolbox right now are your events. Ryan and I also came to the White Christmas event, which was a fantastic event, incredibly well-attended. We got some great footage, so we really want to be able to build on that. And that will take, you know, a variety of forms, obviously highlighting those things on social media, on the website, in the newsletter, but also maybe some boots-on-the-ground work, signing people up for the newsletter, getting them involved in all of the ways that we are promoting these events and the things that are happening in the Town of Silt. So basically, the tactics we're going to use are going to stay the same because we feel like we've created a really strong foundation and now we just need to build on it. So it'll be continued updates to the website. We've talked about with Jeff, making the website bilingual. Also ensuring ADA compliance, we just really want to make sure and there's, you know, third-party providers that can ensure ongoing updates that will ensure ADA compliance. And then just the regular updates to the website with the events. And, you know, things like that, continuing to post on social media as we create the content and also putting that in the newsletter as well. Running data and analytics, as you see, you have that before you and we can talk about that. And then the ongoing content creation, which, like I said, right now we're focused on the video for recruiting and for the State of the Community, but that will also, we'll be doing videos for, continued videos for shop local and events content, things like that. And then we always have the miscellaneous bucket just in case anything comes up that we want, you know, last year, part of that was printing the brochures, printing the stickers, the shop local stickers, just so we have that extra bucket in case we want to do anything else. And of course, as we evaluate how things are going, we can always move those, move those buckets of money around if we feel like we really want to focus more in one area than another. Are there any questions about the proposal?
This is definitely not my realm of, of anything, so I'm going to turn it over to everybody else on this, on the board and see if they have any questions or comments.
No, I was just going to ask the same question I asked last year. Do we know how effective this is? I mean, how, how much interest it's generated in the Town of Silt?
So the analytics report tells us, you know, a lot of information about how people are interacting with what we're doing. So when you look at this, we have 129 subscribers to the email platform, which is not a huge number, but we know when we just are starting this out, it's going to take a while to build and we, and that's why we're working in all of these different areas to continue to build that subscribership. And that's one of the things when I said kind of boots-on-the-ground at the events, it would be really helpful to, you know, have people out there interacting, saying, hey, have you signed up for the Discover Silt newsletter yet? And that way they know they're going to get in their inbox, oh, here's the quarterly newsletter that tells me about all the events that are going to be happening in Silt for the next three months. So it's really just a concerted effort to make sure that we're getting the word out, whether that's through digital means or whether it's through actually interacting with people at events. The email open rate was 50%, that's pretty decent. The Discover Silt Facebook page, we have 396 followers, same kind of concept as the email. We're going to be building on that and it's just a process. I mean, we really just have to keep, you know, really creating that foundation in a year. Then, then you start the work of building on it. And so we keep running these analytics reports to tell us, are we gaining traction? Are we making, you know, forward progress?
All right, thank you.
You bet.
So you guys handed out the shopping bags and the stickers to the local businesses and I knew what they were for. And I went into three, three different businesses and they kind of had the bags and the stickers off to the side, not mentioning anything. I don't know if there was a discussion with each business owner saying, hey, we're giving you this to promote you, so promote this. You know what I'm saying, that to, to get that word out, I don't know.
So we actually did not take the swag to the businesses. That was, your, your staff actually went to the businesses and took that to them. The businesses where we were interacting, we, we did explain very specifically, you know, this is, this is what this is for. Like Carol at the whimsical wagon, you know, she said, yes, I'm absolutely going to have these here by my register and promote that. You know, that's definitely something that we can talk about is better outreach to the businesses to help them understand. And that's an ongoing conversation that we've had with Jeff about how we are getting the message out to businesses, to residents of Silt, why it's so important to shop local and what that, you know, what the benefits of that are. We have the page on the website that gives them the list of all of the public kind of works that benefit from sales tax. But it's, it's an ongoing effort of really making sure that everyone understands that and there's active promotion. So that we can, we can definitely work on that to make sure that the businesses understand the value of that.
Thank you.
I have questions, but I'm happy to wait.
Go ahead.
Looking at the data thanks for providing. I guess I'm confused about how organic social is so much less than direct when I think about the photo contest and all of the traffic that would have been generated there. Am I, what am I missing? Like, did organic social somehow get rerouted to direct? Both of those numbers seem off to me. We should have a lot more organic social traffic by virtue of the contest alone than we would see direct traffic.
So Mark created this report and I'm wondering if he's using terminology differently than what you're thinking when he says direct and organic?
Okay.
I can get clarification from him on that and, and circle back with you. My guess is when he says direct, that that was clicking directly through something like the photo contest as opposed to, somebody just, you know.
Okay, that, that was my thinking as well, yeah. I was like, those numbers should be the other way, but when I look at the top cities by users, are we geo-fencing our ad spend at all or any marketing spend?
We have not done any ads. So, no.
What about our, our tagging, our GTM or? Are we, I'm trying to think of the right way to say this. How are we correlating our GTM with the SEO for the site?
That would be a question for Mark. I, and I can do a much more detailed report on that and ask him that.
I'm just curious because I'm a nerd.
Yeah, no, and we can absolutely provide that information.
Sorry, I thought we had a low ad spend and when I saw Denver being the top city by users, I thought it was related to us fencing that. So we were, in other words, we were spending our ad dollars marketing farther away, why would we market to rifle? Why would we spend ad money to do that? But it turns out we weren't.
So, no, we, we didn't do any Facebook ad, any social ads or?
Not even for the photo contest?
No, all of the ad buys that we did for the photo contest were directly through the post-independent.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't do any kind of
For some reason, I thought we had social, a social media buy, but I'm wrong.
No, we did not do that. It was all directly through the campaign that the PI ran for that.
In the upcoming year, do we have any ad spend?
We haven't, that's, you know, we're still formulating what we can do and that's why that miscellaneous bucket is nice. Because if we decide that we really do want to run with some digital ads, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I would advocate social, but again, geo-fencing it, I don't, I don't want to spend ad money marketing to Newcastle. All due respect to Newcastle, it's nothing personal, but they're already, they're already here effectively.
But that is part of the ongoing conversation is who, who are we marketing to and what are we marketing to them? Are we marketing this, you know, Jeff and I were discussing, are we focusing on, is it a tourism focus? Because we talked about things we could do if we really are interested in doing tourism marketing or are we doing more placemaking lifestyle marketing where we're drawing, we're hoping to attract businesses to locate here? So I think we need to get more, now that we built the foundation, we need to get much more specific. And I, Jeff and I talked about that you all had a work session and I was hoping that then we'd be able to have a meeting to kind of hear your thoughts on that. Is this really a tourism focus? Is this a lifestyle focus, a placemaking focus, an economic development focus? So I think that's kind of the, where we're at right now is then making that next decision so that when we do create some ads, we know who, who we're actually targeting, right?
I would advocate for a tourism focus, but that's just me. We got to get them here once in order to get them to think about living here or, or starting a business here. We've got to attract them as individuals before we can attract them as a business or as a resident. And that works better with social as well. Talk to me about working with the, not just the CRV EDP, but also the sort of, dare I say, revised chamber and how we can coordinate our efforts with theirs. I know they're going through a C-change, leadership change, staff change, model change. How can the Town of Silt, in addition to our other interoperations with them, leverage them for marketing? I don't expect you to have an answer, but I'm thinking about it strategically, is that something we can look at instead of spending every dollar ourselves? Can we get them involved and do a split?
I think that's a wonderful idea. I, I am not entirely in the loop on where they're at in terms of their interface with municipalities and what they are interested in doing.
I think it's still in development, which, which is why I'm presenting it to you, like this is our opportunity to get our foot in that door and to start a cooperative relationship, saying you put in 50 cents, we put in 50 cents and we make it, you know, we get the equivalent of a dollar spend.
Absolutely. I think the question that I would have is, you know, are you, are you just asking them to be collaborative and cooperative in, you know, marketing efforts? Or are you asking them to come in and, you know, actually participate in your events and co-market events? What?
The answer is yes.
Yeah, so I think those would be
Because, because it's in a formation stage, this is the perfect time to ask that question. You know, in my mind, the best case is, is twofold. It's let's do some cooperative marketing across social channels because the cost is nearly zero. But let's also do some event-based stuff. You know, they, they have their own content generation, why can't we provide some to them and they give it to us? Sorry, we're getting into the weeds a bit, I apologize. I don't want to run long, but the idea is, again, thinking ahead to the, the year and the budget, I want to make sure that we're thinking strategically about spending other people's money cooperatively along with our own.
Absolutely.
If we are going to do an ad spend, let's spend 50 cents on the dollar where we can.
Well, and I think the good news is that they are, there's overlap with the CRV EDP so that this conversation absolutely should be happening, not only with how can we work with the chamber, but how can we work with our neighboring municipalities, you know, to, the same way, right? Like how can we have a concerted effort and rather than us all being in our silos spending money, what can we do that will benefit all of us?
A hundred percent. That was it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I got a technology question.
I might have to defer to this one here.
So if I go to Denver for the weekend and I look up Discovery Silt, do I get marked as a Denver user? Or do I get marked as a Silt?
Most likely you, whatever ISP, Internet Service Provider you're using at the time is most likely what's going to tag you, because it's not
It's based on your IP address.
Yeah. I guess, I guess the only exceptions would be, yeah, if you have like a dedicated IP, but it, yeah, that's pretty rare.
I was just wondering, like if these Denver ones, if we, if that's really the top city or is there some, some chance that we have residents in Silt that are searching for it while they're in Denver and it's coming up?
Yeah, it would be based on their IP address.
All right, yeah, okay.
So I got a question, under social media, for $3,000, you've got graphic design and so on. And you go down to miscellaneous for $5,000, you've got the same thing there, graphic design and so on. So I mean, are we paying twice for some of this or?
Well, the miscellaneous is not
Or miscellaneous, yeah. It says gra, you got the same thing though, graphic design and so on. So I mean, are we, I mean, we paying twice for some of this or is it all?
Well, no, the, so, I'm sorry, I'm.
You go back up to, um, social media, it says graphic design, high priority, video and so on. And down below, you're doing graphic design.
So when you, are you referring to where it says includes ongoing graphic design services for print?
Yeah, I mean.
So that would just be different if you decide to do a bro, so graphic design for social media is creating, um, graphics for social media posts and any, to trustee Hanterhand's point, if we would decide to do digital ads, we could, that would be in that bucket. Um, in the miscellaneous bucket, which like I said, that's not a hard and fast, we're, we're doing that. It would just be if we decided, oh, we want to do some brochures or we, we want to do more stickers. Or we want, you know, it would be graphic design mostly for print or branding, things like that. And like I said, that's not necessarily how those funds are going to be used. Um, it's just, we threw in options there of things that they could be used for. Because we don't have a dedicated category for print marketing. So if you decided you wanted to do some print, we would, we could pull that from the miscellaneous bucket. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That money isn't spent unless we use it, unless we decide to, you know, pursue some other yet to be determined.
It may be that you want to use that $5,000 to do digital ad buys. Not print collateral. Yeah. We just like to have that there so that we, if you decide to do something that's not in the line item, we have that ability to go, okay, we have this, this money here for that.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a quick question. You know, in the Eve newsletter campaign where it says promote specific initiatives, you know, it gives the examples, farmer's market, summer concert series. How does one, how would one be, you know, a part of that? And would they just contact you or contact the town or?
Uh, you mean if you have an event that you want to promote?
Well, my, my thought was, um, I'll, I'll use, uh, Silt Haydays for example. How would that work? Would, would somebody from the Hayday committee contact you guys and say, hey, here's our list of events, can you put it in? And, and I know it's once per quarter, can you put it in, you know, this month's email?
So the way that it has worked so far is we are coordinating with Nicole, um, directly.
Okay, okay.
So I would say the best methodology is for who, whoever it is, um, to contact Nicole and let her know. I, we have, you know, a Hayday schedule, can we get that in the newsletter? She'll get that to me and we'll make sure that it's included.
All right.
So Nicole's kind of the filter for that kind of stuff versus you guys getting stuff from everybody that just is saying they're part of Silt.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah. She is my point of contact for all events related, um, information. Yeah.
Perfect.
Are you guys going to have a chance to be at our groundbreaking for our water plant and take some pictures for social media?
Well, and remind me what day that is again.
Part six.
Part six.
Okay, yes, we will.
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, okay, we will put that on the calendar. I absolutely would love to be there because, uh, we just adored your water treatment. Um, folks, they were, they gave us the best tour of all the facilities and, um, they're very excited about the new plants. And yeah, so yes, we will put that on our calendars for sure.
Okay. All right. So this is just information I do need to approve? We have this budgeted already. Okay, so it's already in the budget. So do we need to make a motion to approve a proposal?
It's already kind of done.
This is already done? Okay. All right, easy enough then.
Well, thank you all. I just would like to reiterate, it's been really a joy working, um, on this. And I, I hope that you all know anytime you have questions, please feel free to reach out to us. Or if you have any ideas, any input, we would, we'd love to hear that feedback, absolutely, so.
Sounds good. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Ryan. That's Jennifer and Bob right there.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the Astera, Astera project update with Jennifer Stapp. All right.
Come on down.
Come on up.
Come down.
And Lawrence is going to kick us off on this.
Yes.
We'll get into Astera's presentation.
Yeah, it's just a little background. Uh, thank you, sir, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the town sold, uh, 1555 River Frontage Road to Silt Energy Development LLC uh, in August of last year. Part of that sale was an option agreement. Uh, the motivation is, um, you know, to create new development within the town, generate tax dollars, generate jobs, uh, right here in the town of Silt. So the option agreement was important to the town. Uh, it dictated that within, um, the option period or prior to the option period beginning, there was two factors that, uh, we wanted met, which was one, um, one valid building permit authorizing construction of a structure. And then also, uh, or and or the sewer and water tap fees, uh, for the structure being paid. So that option period is two years until February of 2026. So during that option period, the town does have the option to repurchase the property for the purchase price. Uh, town staff is not recommending that the town take any action at this time. It's more of just, uh, an FYI for your information so that, um, you know, if the property remains dormant and no activity occurs, you do have that option to repurchase the property prior to February of 2026. After that time, um, it, that option as it currently is written will expire. It's possible that you could extend the option, but right now that's how it is. And with that said, uh, we're excited to have Astera here in the town and I'd like to hear from you.
Well, thank you guys. We really appreciate you guys, um, putting us on your schedule and letting us come visit with you. Davis Architects has provided for your packet a brief PDF of what our vision is for the alternative fuel station. That's what we're wanting to do there. Um, in conjunction with some of your local businesses as well. So we're actively working with Andrew and Misty at Wild Coffee Company. They are still looking at whether they want to take on the cafe portion of the fuel station or if they want to do what they do so fantastically, which is the coffee. So we're very excited to be working with them. I'm going to try to meet with them tomorrow on a lot more of the detail and the other things that are going on. But, um, we are very excited to become part of your community and we want to be here to be of support. And we've been working with the Colorado River Valley Economic Partnership with Alicia. Jeff was kind enough to make those and several other, other introductions. Because we're coming in here to not only be a good neighbor, but we definitely want to have something that you guys are going to feel like it's enhancing your community, not, um, detracting from it. And so a lot of our vision with what we're doing is connecting to existing things that are, like the paths and the walking paths and trying to connect those to make it more of a community. Because we both, we know that the land to the right and to the left of us both, um, the event center going in and then the option on the other land that could do housing, mixed use and other things. So we're, what we're hoping to do is really attract not only your commuters that are going in and out of a morning and give them something that there's more parking than is available on Main Street. That gives Wild Coffee the availability in the mornings to have additional business that without a drive-through, they really can't do right now, the way that that particular location, um, is situated. So if there's not a lot of parking, somebody may bypass it. Where we're going to have a lot of parking, um, we are doing alternative fuels, so it will be, will have 12 ports for electric chargers. That's what we are starting with. We have the infrastructure in for both the hydrogen and the compressed natural gas. You don't see them in the rendering, they're behind the building. And those, as the need picks up, we will be putting those in place for you guys. So that's what we'd like to do is just get your feedback and your input. Because like we said, we want this to mirror what your goals and everything are for the property. And, you know, how we can bring that community together. We're open to questions, feedback, and we're excited to share.
Jennifer, did you have a video that you wanted to show?
I do. I didn't know if you guys wanted to go through this first, but we have, we've provided you with the PDF. But Davis today provided us with a new, um, I will go ahead and share. I think Sheila was going to let me share screen.
It's all yours.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. I don't think you guys are going to get the sound, but this is the fuel station. You'll see that there are cantilevered carports. We've tried to take into consideration snow removal and everything, so we didn't want to put a lot of posts in between the parking places. You'll notice that it is ran, um, we will have a renewable energy component by using the solar carports and utilizing those to not only give shelter to the people and the clients and customers that are coming in, but we will also have a lot of these centralized spaces. So we tried to keep with the very natural aesthetic, tried to keep to Silt's personality. Um, we try not to go super showy, but we wanted to use native plants and a lot of the different, um, just very mindful things. So it's an active indoor, outdoor space. We want this to become like a community gathering place, not just for people coming in and out of Silt. But on the other side of that, we're also hoping to draw a lot of traffic in that is going from Grand Junction to Denver or Vail or any of those other cities and have them stopping in Silt and seeing what we loved about it. So, um, what you'll see, um, they were very thoughtful in the design and the architecture and the, um, landscape design with this to keep the drainage, to keep everything. And our civil engineering department is working with your engineers as well to make sure that it meets all of those guidelines. Inside, you'll see that there is a combined space. Right now, we have Wild Coffee. And if they decide to do the entire cafe, um, they will have the entire space that wraps around them. If not, then, um, we, they have given us a couple other recommendations to bring in for the cafe and we'll be happy to share those. We're trying to go with a very natural element that mirrors, um, the indoors and outdoors. We've tried to keep it very earthy. Um, we're using sustainable materials, including our concrete product um, through Salvim, which actually pulls CO2 out of the environment. We have two work pods built in so that if somebody needs to stop and take a meeting or, um, we wanted to give that quiet space available or if somebody needed to just stop in and finish a project. In the fresh market that you'll see here, we want to work with the local farmers, work with local artisans um, and make it as local as possible and take, like you guys were talking about in the last presentation, try to feature as much local as possible. We want it to be light bright and make it where it's a nice, safe space. And, you know, that's our goal because a lot of times you'll see with EV chargers, they're not always at the forefront. Um, they're an afterthought sometimes. And since there is a lot of, um, different opportunities in the EV world right now, we know that that's not going to be everything. But we're very excited and we're here to answer any questions and listen to any feedback or suggestions that you guys might have.
Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead.
So close questions, I like it.
For Trey maybe, so looking at this, they shared the driveway with Holiday and both, the two driveways. So I guess my concern, I just, kind of my concern would be during construction of interfering with Holiday in, but I mean, that's, I just was double checking.
I guess my question is probably the obvious one. When do you guys plan on starting your project?
So we, I meet with the general contractor tomorrow. We're using Hazleton out of Glenwood Springs. Um, they've done a lot of the college associated and a lot of the education and even, you know, lower education levels. So they're very familiar with using prevailing wage and the things that we require, um, within our projects. So we were very comfortable with that decision and that recommendation from Davis. And we're meeting with them tomorrow. They're going to be giving us, um, a timeline that I can get to you guys. And so we are, they're going to finish up our site plan, all of our costing, and then we'll have that information available. We are hoping to have the doors open, um, first quarter of 2025. We would love to see it happen before then, but we also know that it's a process and things come up. So we would like to open sooner and we'll, we'll see how it goes.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? I have a question, uh, for the attorney about extending the timeline. You mentioned that early on. How, how would that happen?
Well, any contract is, uh, something that we could create. So if, you know, for example, uh, it's the fall of 2025 and they have not met the conditions, which, uh, we, they have to meet both of the conditions. And we say, uh, you know, the town of Silt's going to repurchase the property from you. Hopefully that's not the case. And, um, but you've invested significant resources into, um, getting started, but you haven't met these conditions. You could say, well, can we please extend the deadline and sign a new option agreement?
I'd like to see it extended rather than just removed or forgotten.
Right, so that's a conversation for, you know, 18 months from now. Uh, you think this is a great project, you're really in support of it. They think it's a great project, they're really in support of it, but they're not going to get it done before February of 2026 to meet these conditions. In that case, you know, we could sign a new, uh, option agreement and just say, we, we agree to refrain from exercising our option if we can extend that, uh, say another 12 months or something along those lines.
So once we get that timeline, maybe then we could have that discussion about what that extension needs. But my concern is that as it stands right now, this is someday maybe.
I understand.
All due respect.
No, absolutely. We are early in the process.
And, and I want to make sure that our incentives are aligned to get something done in that space. It's a great use case, but it's still someday maybe.
Right. No, and like I said, we are excited to get our permit application and get our final site plans and everything so that we can move forward with construction as soon as possible. We want to especially take advantage of having positive weather over the summer and, you know, those types of things. So we'd like to get it expedited and moving along. We've got other projects that we're doing in the area, um, that we can go into another date. But they're, um, we're here to stay. We, we are excited to be in the community and, um, that's where we would love to have you guys' feedback, is anything else that you would like to see? Or if there are any concerns that you have with anything that you see so far, we'd like to head them off now. While we're still with the architects, so that they can make those changes, additions, subtractions, those types of things. But we don't want to be, you know, a huge draw on the power. We are trying to be very cognizant of issues that you guys face already and, um, power stability, a lot of different things that, um, different options there. But we want it, you know, we want it to be a place that the community can come and gather. If they want to go have breakfast, they want to go have lunch, you know, there's, it, it's an extra place. It's an extension of what you guys are, but we also want it to become a destination as travelers are coming through that put a focus on Silt. So. So that's really important to us as well, is trying to work together. And, like I said, we have some other verticals that we're working with, with the Colorado River Valley Economic, we're, um, partnership. And then we're also working with, um, the County of Garfield on a couple things too, that are in those preliminary phases. But we're looking at education, workforce development, and making it a very circular economy, and where it's beneficial on all aspects, and we just wanna be very cognizant of what you guys' wants and needs are as well.
So you're, you're right there on that corner where there's, uh, you mentioned connecting the, um, the trails and stuff and everything, but you're right on that corner to where there's heavy, heavy truck traffic there and kind of a dangerous, could potentially be a dangerous situation there. I mean, I know you're kinda limited to C dot as far as crossings and stuff, but, uh, any forethought about extra security, extra safety as far as, um, crosswalks and getting people to where they, safely where they need pedestrians?
So, right now, the existing path is in front, is already on the front of the property. It will be extended down, and then, um...
Down into the, into the river, by the way.
Down to the riverside. We brought the goats in, we brought goat green in, and they got rid of the noxious weeds and the different things, so that we weren't cutting them and spreading them down the river and other things. But what we see is connecting down to that path. Um, there have been members from the city that have said it'd be great, because the Advent Center is coming over to have something there. So I don't know as far as with the crosswalks, with the different things, whether, you know, what that will look like and who would be responsible for that. I mean, we, you know, safety is one of our main, you know, our main concerns, and we do, you know, we are happy to have those discussions with C dot, with everyone else, um, for that corner.
Right.
Unfortunately, we, we can't tell them what to do, but I mean, we'd be in support of making anything safer in that area.
And starting the conversation and getting everyone to the, to the table about it.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're gonna come out, and then you can take, go across the bridge to the dog park, which would be great for you, people, uh, charging their cars, walking their dogs over there and stuff like that. But that's definitely, uh, dangerous crossing that bridge, yeah.
Right.
So just ideas, I don't know.
No, absolutely, that's what, that's what we're here for, is we definitely want to, um, take all of that feedback and advice and anything that you guys have. And you're welcome to email any of our team, um, at any time if you have thoughts or questions or anything that pop up after this meeting. We're definitely open to conversations, and, um, we hope that you like the aesthetic, like the inside-outside and just the naturalness of it. That's what we were kind of aiming for, is to kind of showcase silt, so it's still...
And you could recover this dog park space that's on the screen now and walk a thousand feet.
Oh.
Maybe more, maybe fifteen hundred feet, I'm not good with the distance, but...
When we first started looking at it, I didn't realize the dog park was over there, and so I put it on my list of things we would like to have. Um, and so, we, we definitely could do, look at that for sure. And then put signage up showing that the do, that there's a dog park just across the street, and we're definitely open to any of that with you guys.
I think you're spot on, Sam. And Rizlenda's gonna want a robust crosswalk there for pedestrian traffic as well. It's, your incentives are perfectly aligned. They want one, you want one.
Mm-hmm.
You know, share the cost, get, get C dot to listen a little better.
Anything that they would give us, you know, just to bring attention to it. And even if we had flashing signage, or, you know, we're totally open to any of that, any of those recommendations.
So you're in the process of reaching out to Rizlenda, or?
I haven't yet. Um, we wanted to get through tonight's meeting and get your feedback prior to, um, doing that, but, um...
Just the cart-horse thing, so there's already an agreement. We've already been through this with Rizlenda, what they're required to have across that road, so.
Right.
Anything beyond that would be this team willing to step up to do.
Right, that, that's why I'm saying like, extend that, extend that collaboration.
Reinforce, but Rizlenda's already knew.
Yeah, they've already got.
We wanna look and see then, what they're doing, and then see what we could ask them to add on to it to make it even better.
Even better, yeah.
I would hope they would talk to one another directly.
Hopefully.
And say, "Hey, hey, town of Silt, this is what we came up with. Are we good?"
Yep.
Yeah.
That would be an ideal case.
Okay.
And again, recover that space.
Um, what's the best way to reach out to her? Is it through, what's the easiest? Jeff?
Probably get to their contact.
To, oh, just to talk to Rizlenda?
Rizlenda, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I... Sorry. Can you connect to us with that? Uh-huh, of course.
That'd be fantastic. All right. Well, we're definitely looking forward to it. We wanted to, we want to get in front of you with a timeline and a final site plan and get your feedback. Um, we've been working directly with Nicole and Jeff, and we're very sad to see Jeff leaving.
Yep.
But we're, we're very excited, and I love that you guys have the social media presence and the marketing and the active things that you guys are trying to do for the town. And so hopefully we can help enhance that and give some more draw into the town.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yes, you too.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Next up is the approval of a master services agreement between the Town of Silt and Flock Group, Inc.
I don't know if Lieutenant Gronback is going to be here or not, but, um, I did assist, uh, the police department in, in negotiating the contract, uh, as directed by, uh, the Board of Trustees. I believe at our last meeting...
There they are.
There they are.
Hey, good evening. Uh, but at the last meeting, you instructed, uh, town staff to negotiate, uh, an ag, a final agreement with Flock, um, which we, which we set off to do. We were able to put some clauses in there, such as an appropriations clause, uh, which allowed it to go for more than one year. Um, there were several other concerns that I remember the board addressed at that time. Um, but before I go into that, uh, I'll see if, if, you were supposed to present, so I don't wanna monopolize the microphone, and, and I'll let you start, Lieutenant Gronback.
You're fine. Um, so basically, uh, Sawyer's office, uh, got with Flock and negotiated the, uh, couple terms that were asked for, um, one of which was the cost ceiling, um, so that the, so that in case Flock, uh, raised the price after the, the two, the initial two-year, um, agreement. We wanted to kind of lock that pricing in. Um, they didn't agree to that, um, but we do have the ability to cancel if they do raise the price, um, after that two years. Uh, the other thing was, uh, if a camera goes down, um, to repair it within the seven days, that was already in the MSA. Um, so there was, I don't think we had, did you do any adjustments to that?
No, that seems pretty, uh, I, I thought that was a good term. Um, you know, if, if something happens to the camera, they, they have seven days to come out and repair it or replace it. So, um, it wasn't, it was just more of identifying what that timeline was, but it was built into the contract, um, for, for the seven-day repair or replacement.
Um, and then the other thing was, um, if the cameras do go down for an extended period, uh, the concern was, uh, having to pay for the system when it wasn't operational. Um, and, uh, what is in the MSA is that, uh, if that does happen, they will prorate the cost, so we won't be paying for a system that's not working.
So it looks like, um, this year is sixteen, seven fifty?
Um, the updated...
And then next year would be the fifteen?
Yep, the updated quote was, um, just under sixteen for the first year. Um, and then the second year, uh, was right at fifteen.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it goes again from the date of, we start to date, year, that year doesn't go January to January, the year starts when we start the program?
Exactly, 'cause there's...
On track date or whatever it is?
Yeah, 'cause they'll have to install the cameras, and so it'll start at that point.
Okay.
Yep.
There was a clause in here about if we needed any, um, AC power to any of these cameras, it'd be at the town's expense. Are you gonna have to be AC-powered?
Um, the locations that I looked at with Flock, um, I, the, the poles that they identified, um, I don't, it's all in the, it's all in that quote, that, just under sixteen.
So if they're solar-powered, that would be a backup, correct? Or would these run off of AC power?
Um, I, I don't know on that.
Okay. So I, I just assumed they were solar-powered.
That's what, yeah, there's just a, I'm trying to find it.
It's like a backup battery or something. I know, I'm looking too.
No, I think it's great. I, um, just to let you know, the other morning on, um, Good Morning America, they had a segment in, where it was, they said it wouldn't have been for the flock, the flock camera caught. The guy was, through the flock cameras, how they caught him. It was a pretty good, yeah, I can't remember what the whole deal was, but it was, they kept mentioning the flock camera, the different cameras is how they traced him to where he was, so, it works.
Yeah, they're very useful. Um, I've, I, I've got a stolen vehicle off, uh, flock cameras up in Glenwood. So, it, very useful.
Yeah, they tracked him down the interstate to the next ti, whatever, and they, that's how they caught him. It wouldn't have been for that, they said it never would've caught him.
Yep.
Just, so I, I know it works.
Yep.
Yeah, I found it. If the flock cameras need to be AC-powered, the customer is responsible for providing an electrician to ensure the power connectivity.
Yes, I just wondered if they're all gonna be solar-powered? Or if we have some that we are gonna have to run electricity to to power them?
Uh, we looked at s, uh, some poles, and, um, I talked to Trey, um, about, um, there were XL.
There are XL?
Yeah.
Power poles, light poles, so there's already electric there.
There, yeah.
Okay.
You're attaching to the light poles, or you're somewhere else?
They're gonna be, um, they're gonna be light poles. Um, one of them's just an, an electrical pole, uh, like no light, just an electrical pole.
I always, I always imagined they were on like a stop sign or a stop light or something, but yeah.
And then, this is probably for the attorney, what is the liability of Flock if a camera that's, gets owned by us, falls off of a pole and hits a pedestrian? Is the town gonna be liable for that, or is Flock gonna be?
It's a good question. Uh, I, I might have to look into that a little further to have a, a correct answer for you, but they do have, uh, they are required under the terms of the contract to have an insurance and to indemnify the town. So, uh, you know, if it's their negligence that the camera fell off, then, uh, they would be liable under this, and their insurance coverage should handle that up to, uh, I believe it was up to a million dollars, uh, liability policy. However, you know, if, if, if it's, say, uh, the town loosens it, or some constituent is throwing rocks at the camera and, and it falls off that way, uh, I'm not sure I know the answer off the top of my head, how that would unfold and, and tort liability. But, uh, for the, the simple answer is, yeah, if they install it improperly and it comes off and falls and, and causes, say, property damage, hits a car or something like that, then Flock should be liable for that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this page I have on the screen does speak briefly of the AC power kit or solar panels as needed that is covered by Flock.
Yeah, so the AC power kits, but the drawings aren't, yeah. I just didn't know if we were gonna power any of them with AC or not. And then my next question also would be, so a, I mean, we're, there's data being transmitted over cellular communications. If that data's intercepted by a third party and something happens with it, would the town ever be liable for that information getting into the wrong person's hands? Someone, someone figures out a way to hack this camera, gets a picture of their girlfriend closing by, driving by, and something happens to that person, would the town ever be held liable in a situation like that?
Uh, I'll defer to my earlier answers. I'm, I'm not perfectly sure of, of what the answer to that is, but, um, that, I think it would depend, how did they get access to it? Was it a breach through the Town of Silt, or was it a breach through Flock? Um, I'd have to look into that a little further to have an educated answer for you, and I apologize.
That's all right. I have no further questions.
This is my turn.
It's your turn.
Your turn.
Your turn.
So I, I stopped by the, the, the office earlier today because I, I missed the last meeting, so I was trying to catch up with the lieutenant, not ambush him, as I called it earlier at tonight's meeting. But I, I had two things that I wanted to make sure we were discussing and aligned on as part of this. Uh, number one is policies. When we're implementing or installing equipment, particularly for law enforcement use, I feel like we should have policies that guard our residents' rights and, and sort of constrain the allowed activities, et cetera, et cetera, and ensure the safety of the law enforcement team as well as the citizenry. So I had asked for, we had a Glenwood Springs template, but that ours won't be an identical match, and that's fine. They're a different town, they're gonna have different needs. But I wanna make sure we have some sort of an accompanying policy. And Lieutenant, you indicated we have similar policies for other equipment used by Silt Police.
Correct.
Tasers?
Body cams.
Body cams, that was the other one. Um, and the, the other one I had was reporting. If we're buying and paying for this product, we need to know, how is it working? How is it being utilized? Is it working? So that in two years, when we're making another budgetary decision, it's based on data. And we discussed whether we wanna do that monthly or quarterly, and I was of the opinion that monthly is probably gonna be too few use cases for it to be manageable for myself. I'm not speaking for everyone, but quarterly seemed like a more reasonable timeframe for me, where we'd have sufficient camera data that would, it would be useful to us to understand the use cases.
Yeah, I think quarterly would be good, 'cause it's better than yearly, 'cause yearly can get too big, too broad.
Too big, monthly is too small, and there's, there's manual time, there's administrative time that has to be spent doing that.
Exactly.
And I, I don't think any of us want the lieutenant or anyone on the force generating reports instead of doing other law enforcement activities that are much more important to the citizens.
Correct.
So I think there's a, there's a balance there.
I think quarterly would be good.
I think quarterly to start off with, and then if it proves useful, or, uh, proves that we read up it, then go maybe semi-annually, or you know what I mean? You don't have to like, put that much... It's already proven itself, so let's, let's start to get back to business, you know? I would think, that's how I would feel.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that too. After two years, we'll know a lot more about the use cases.
Hope it all, we want to hear the information.
Yeah.
Quick question, I don't know if it's for Jeff or whoever. You know, here it says, you know, damaged because of vandalism, theft, or whatever, thirteen hundred dollars. Just a question, does our town policy, insurance policy, would it cover something like this if it got stolen, damaged? Just curious, I didn't, you know?
If we wanted to submit that small of a claim, uh, Amy can give you the specifics, but sometimes it's not worthwhile, you know?
Our deductible is a thousand dollars, so it probably would not be worthwhile.
Okay, I, I didn't know, so, okay. Unless we had several of them destroyed during the night, if they went through them.
Right.
Okay. I'm just curious, I didn't know.
Hopefully at that point, we get a picture of the license plate. They get to pay for it, so.
Here it comes.
Yeah, if we don't get a picture of the vandalism, yeah.
Unless they're riding their bicycle or walking.
With a baseball bat.
They're twelve foot up, aren't they? Take picture of baseball bats, just like...
Yeah, they're just license plates.
Twelve foot up, so you'd need a pretty good baseball bat to hit them, so.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Exactly.
And, um, I, I just wanna chime back in. Mayor, you asked a few liability questions earlier.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I had, uh, kind of forgotten about the Colorado Government Immunity Act.
Yeah.
Um, so, for municipalities in Colorado generally aren't liable for torts. So if they were to fall and, and hit someone, for example,
Right.
Uh, there is the immunity to the Town of Silt over that incident.
I was more worried, you know, that's a one situation where it could happen, but like a data... I was more worried, you know, that's a one situation where it could happen, but like a data breach is is probably more
Yeah.
likely than I, than a camera falling off a pole.
Hopefully we can find that actual criminal who's doing that, but, um, if not, I, I think the Immunity Act would also apply.
Would apply, okay. And actually, there's a thing in here for cyber, cyber liability, five million dollars that I just saw.
There we go.
Down here, so.
But it won't protect us. Hypothetical, if one of the computers that has access to it gets hacked, and it becomes our legal liability, not, not Flock's.
Correct, then it, then it falls, yeah, then it's a, whether it's a governmental immunity situation or.
But that's why we have lawyers.
That's Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we have surpassed our ten minutes on this.
Okay. Um, I just want to restate, this has been restated at meetings before, and I think it's the good thing, this is just another tool for our, our police department to use, so. You know, we, and we're trusting in our police department to use the tool correctly. This is an action item, not a public hearing, but if there's any further discussion, or if someone would like to make a, a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the master services agreement between the town of Silt and Flock Group Incorporated.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by trustee Seaford, uh, for the approval of the master services agreement between the town of Silt and Flock Group Incorporated. Seconded by trustee Clausen, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, fellows.
Next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, an ordinance annexing to the town of Silt, Colorado, certain real property located at one twenty-nine West Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado, known as the Marioni Annexation. Our applicants are here, and I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Perfect. I'd like to thank the Marionis and Mr. Weisley for being here again tonight. Um, this is the second reading of ordinance one, which is the approval of the annexation for one twenty-nine West Home. I was not going to get into too many details, as you guys have heard this a couple times before. Um, but if you have any questions, I am definitely happy to answer those.
Oh, my, questions have been answered at prior meetings.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Straightforward at this point.
Yep, yep.
I guess the only question is, plans haven't changed for the applicants?
Still the same.
Okay. All right. Nobody has anything further, this is a public hearing?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. Uh, the time is eight eighteen PM, and I'll open up the public hearing uh, in regards to ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-four. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Thank you. And would anybody here in the public like to make a comment on this agenda item? No? Okay. Time is eight nineteen PM, and I will close the public hearing, and hope to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the second reading of ordinance one, series of twenty twenty-four. An ordinance annexing to the town of Silt, Colorado, a certain real property located at one twenty-nine West Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado, known as the Marioni Annexation.
Second.
All right. Uh, motion by trustee Clausen to approve the second reading of ordinance number one, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, that was seconded by trustee Brittenall, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want you guys to stay right there for a second. Uh, next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, an ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado, zoning is R two, general residential district, a zero point one eight acre parcel located at one twenty-nine West Home Avenue, Silt, Colorado, known as the Marioni Annexation within the town of Silt, Colorado. Back to Nicole.
And we did receive plans for what they're proposing under the R two zone district, which is a single family. So staff still supports an R two zone district designation, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Nope. Been answered.
All those are being made changes?
No changes.
No changes?
All the same.
All the same?
All the same.
Okay. All right.
Looking forward to building a home.
A home, nice. Uh, if there's no further discussion by the board, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, the time is eight twenty, and I will open up the public hearing uh, for the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four. Uh, persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Uh, Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
All right.
I do not show any raised hands.
Thank you. And would anybody in the public like to speak to this agenda item? All right. Uh, seeing done, the time is eight twenty-one PM, and I will close the public hearing and open it up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four as presented.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by trustee Brittenall to approve the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four as presented. Seconded by trustee Clausen, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to the town of Silt.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck on your venture, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks just to get started.
I'm good. Get that shovel going.
Yeah.
Thanks, fellows. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good evening.
Yeah, you too.
All right. Next up is the January twenty twenty-four financial report. Turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the month of January, um, eight percent of the year has passed, so our numbers are not what you're used to hearing for the past couple of months. Um, we are, right now, about five percent down from where we were for sales tax in January of last year, but we're still ahead of schedule, um, at eight point seven percent of what we thought we were going to, um, uh, receive for this year, so kind of awash, I would say. Um, we are way up on the use tax. Um, we're right in line with our trash, wastewater and irrigation fees, and we are higher than what we anticipate, anticipated our water fees to be, at eleven point two percent, with eight percent of the year having, um, elapsed. Um, really not much to report on in this, at this moment, but I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for our treasurer?
I do not have any.
No?
Nope. We'll see how the rest of the year plays out, it's only January.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Thanks, Treasurer Tucker.
Oh, we have been, and I probably should have mentioned this, the revenues that you see in the water fund, we had been reimbursed for that resolution four that you had passed, um, a couple of years ago, I think, where we could reimburse ourselves up to that two million dollar mark for engineering that we had already done on the water treatment plant, we have been, been reimbursed for one point four of that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, next up is administrator and staff comments. Staff? Administrator?
The only thing I would, uh, highlight is the state of the community chamber luncheon coming up, uh, on March eleventh. Um, I, I haven't heard the update, but I know, I think several of you have, um, planned to come to that, so, looking forward to that. And, um, uh, Katie mentioned earlier that our, our, uh, our presentation this year is a more, a little more professional, uh, rendition of kind of what's going on in Silt, so I, I haven't seen it yet, so it's going to be interesting to see how that works out. And I think Katie also talked about the fact that, uh, I challenged them to make it do double duty uh, as a recruiting tool for not just the position of, uh, town manager, but also, you know, any other town, uh, positions that we may have open. So I think that's going to be really exciting to see, and my fingers are crossed. And I am going to work with the mayor on, uh, how we're going to kick that thing off on, uh, on March eleventh, because I think we're going to have a, like a live kind of thing, where somebody will go up there and kind of introduce the topic.
Introduce it.
Well, I see, I see that finger being.
Can we nominate?
Yeah.
I bet that's unanimous.
I'm going to be there, yeah.
Will our interim, interim manager be there?
Uh, I haven't talked to him about it yet, I think I did send him the.
I think, I, I just think it would be nice for him to be there to meet, so people, the other towns.
Well, I think he told, told us earlier.
I mean, if he can, I just.
Ready to start on, uh, February twenty-ninth, so that would be.
I just think it would be, would be nice for the towns to meet him and stuff.
Introduce him.
Just add that as a meeting on his calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check with him tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay.
And I believe that's oh, uh, we got another grant, uh, that Deborah had produced. Uh, I think she, uh, on this one, she worked with, uh, Nicole and I on, uh, getting this housing grant, which is basically a grant for uh, some assistance to help us, uh, uh, hire some, uh, hire consultants to actually do a housing needs assessment, and that, uh, does line up with, uh, some of the work we're, that we did in the strategic plan. So that's pretty cool.
Also on March eleventh is C dot yearly meeting with Garfield County and all of the entities in Garfield County at, I'm believing the BOCC chambers is what it's usually.
It's virtual.
Oh, it's virtual, they sure.
And I did send that to the board last week.
So.
Because it's the same day.
Yeah, it's the same day, so whoever would like to set in on that. That's the one we did last year, set on, we went in down there, is that the same thing? Yes. With C dot and. Yeah, C dot. Yep. Same thing, just the yearly meeting with C dot, and I believe the IMTPR chair will be there, and then, of course, all the communities in Garfield County.
I really didn't want to mention that first bullet point on my, uh, staff report, but, uh,
You better.
Since he's here, I guess I should. Uh, I reluctantly accepted Trey's resignation uh, effective on March twenty-second, twenty-four. Uh, he and I talked about, uh, having him, uh, contracted with the town to come back and, or, or more likely to Zoom with meetings on the water plant as they come up, and kind of make sure that Jim gets acquainted with the other side of the equation, not just the money, but the, the construction and all that. Uh, and also the people, to meet all the people that are involved in that process, from our staff to, uh, the, the contractors and engineers. So uh, we've got a tentative agreement. Having him come back and do some work with us. With you.
Was there some sort of succession plan with that, with your position, or just curious? Nothing?
No, uh, the, the town will have to go into some kind of, um, recruiting mode for that as well. I would, I would think it'd probably follow a very similar trajectory, and, uh, chances are the, uh, I don't know how that's going to work, I don't know whether the interim manager would make that, that selection, or the manager. It would make sense to wait till the manager's on board, the new manager, to try to do that. Kind of depends on how the chess pieces fall, so to speak, Trey.
Then do we need an interim?
Depends on his plan.
Yes. And we'll, we'll be working, Trey and I will be working, or have, have already talked a little bit about how we would handle that. Likely going to be Joe Lundin, he's going to pick up the the projects, because he's in the middle of them, most of them anyway.
Makes sense, yeah.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay. Is that all the good news you have?
It's all the good news I have. Wait a minute, I got housing grants.
Housing grants, yeah. Okay. Uh, updates from the board and board comments. Trustee Forrest?
No, I guess we're going to have a topic next week about, uh, law enforcement, so that's all I had.
Trustee Clausen?
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, one for, uh, Director Trey, uh, the Grand Avenue Waterline.
Yes.
Is that still, I mean, I know it's in the works, but what is the project?
It's in engineering, and we're hoping to get that out of engineering, let's see. Home Avenue, we're hoping to put out the bid in a week or two to do that last stretch of Home Avenue and Terra.
Oh.
Because it needed some engineering done on it. And as soon as we get that out to bid, they're going to go back and finish up Grand Avenue, and I want to say we're hoping to have something to be able to go out to bid in like May or June on that project, and it more than likely, it's looking, it's going to go from Pioneer to Sixteenth, or Pickett to Sixteenth.
Okay.
Sorry.
Got you.
Will be the first phase of that project, something of that nature.
All right. So you, you anticipate sometime this year, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chris, um, Trey might have something to say about, uh, the railroad, too, we had, had some good news today about that, right?
Yeah. Well, kind of good news, I finally, finally got the permit from the railroad.
You don't have to tell them the bad news, just tell them the good news.
I finally got the permit from the railroad to bore underneath the railroad for this boring project that I submitted last April. And it finally came through today at twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the permit.
We're going to raise ours.
I know, yeah.
Wow.
That's what I told Nicole, I was like, anybody that wants to complain about a permit through the town of Silt, tell them to go get one from the railroad.
And it mimics railroads in general, slow and expensive.
No, it does, it does.
So we do have that, so we can, and that project is underway, they're probably underneath one of the eastbound lanes of I seventy at the moment. Because currently with the terrain they're going through, it's a hand dig. They can't use the machine at the moment. So if anybody's looking for a job,
Yeah.
sure Jim would put you to work climbing up a thirty-six inch casing and digging.
So is that really what, they're, they're climbing up the pipe, digging it up by hand, and then just kind of
Yeah, they.
dragging it back somehow?
Um, they've got a trolley system, and they've got a couple air things, so they crawl up there, they dig by hand, they put it in the trolley, they bring the trolley back and dump it. They get about six to eight inches out from the casing, and then they come out and they push the casing forward and start again.
Oh, wow.
And that's to keep on, the rocks, the rocks are causing them to go off grade too much by using the machine. So to stay on grade, they had, they're hoping, Jim's done about every bore in the town, and probably ninety percent of the bores between Glenwood and Junction. And he's hoping when he gets to about the middle of the interstate, that the terrain changes from what they've noticed, and they'll be able to set their machine in and actually use the machine for the last part of it.
Uh-huh. Did they have this problem on the last one, that they did here?
Yes.
Oh, did they?
They, the last project they did for us was that sewer line that went down by where the, um, underpass is on the interstate, and that was, they had to hand dig that one completely. Because they just, the rocks kept knocking them off grade, and well, at least with the water line, they don't have to be as exact, but that other one was a sewer line, so it had to be pretty right on grade
Oh, yeah.
for gravity flow. So.
Nice, well, thank you. Um, another question I had, I noticed by, I guess, fifth, fifth and sixth streets. Um, there are crosswalk signs on the light poles on Highway six, but there aren't any stripes going across. And what made me notice it is because there, there's a mother and a couple kids on the corner wanting to cross, and, you know, at the last second, I'm like, oh, oh, I'd better stop for them, you know, so I, I just, you know, that's how I noticed.
Well, unfortunately, I will have to go through the C dot process, so we might have to take the crosswalk signs down for now.
Uh-huh.
Until I can get permission from C dot to put crosswalk bars across Highway six at those locations.
Uh-huh, okay. All right, and then, I had a question for Nicole. The Western Slope Veterans, what are they, Coalition? Do you have an update for that?
I do not, we're still waiting for an application, an official application.
Okay.
Once that's received, then we can start going through the process.
Got you. And I guess just to clarify, when they were in front of planning and zoning, that was just an information item, it wasn't
Correct.
any sort of approval, because they don't have their application in.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that took.
And that, that took so long, and we had such a turnout of people, that we decided not to do that at the board level and ask them to go on ahead and submit a full application so they can go through the process. What was on the agenda for twenty minutes ended up being an hour and a half.
Got you. And I knew it was somewhat controversial, so that's why I thought I'd bring it up tonight, just so the people at home, you know, hear that, you know, that was just an informational item, nothing's, nothing's set in stone or a done deal yet, so.
Correct.
And there's plenty of other opportunities for the public to come out to either P and Z or at the board level and let their thoughts be known.
Yes, it'll be public notice several times through the process.
Okay. And then the other thing I had was, I haven't forgotten about our little overtime talk, so it would be nice to get it on an agenda someday. And granted, this wouldn't happen, you know, because the original idea was overtime for the town employees, because they're just comp time right now. So and granted, this wouldn't be this year, it would be for the twenty twenty-five budget, so we have plenty of time. But I just, I just didn't want that to fall through the cracks.
Okay.
Treasurer Tucker, did you want to address that? You're, you're on our screen here, so.
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to kind of give them an update that we have we're going to be changing that in our policy, well, it's already in place in our policy and procedure handbook, and I have added line items to the budget for overtime in each of the departments that we allocate payroll to in preparation for putting it into effect, my goodness, my brain stopped working. So we can start it actually now, if you want to get an idea of what we should budget for twenty twenty-five. The employees are still just getting comp time, but we can put into effect paying them overtime if they so choose.
Maybe, since we have an HR subcommittee meeting scheduled, maybe we bring that up at that time and, and talk a little bit about it. We'll bring you some data on what that, what we think that might cost, and then the committee can give us some feedback on moving that forward and bring that back to the board then.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Just wanted to thank all the employees, the good job that they're doing, and keep up the good work, and that's all in the comments.
Okay, trustee Seifert?
Okay, Nicole, I get asked every day, I don't understand Spanish, what's going in at Mr. Brunch? Is it grocery? I've had more people, I don't understand Spanish, I don't know what the sign means.
Yes, so there's a La Placita in Carbondale.
Right.
And they have like a meat market slash restaurant, and they are opening a second version of that business at Mr. Brunch, so it'll be a meat market restaurant. It is, it is called La Placita Two, because that is the name of their Carbondale restaurant, but it is not an extension of the La Placita Market that we currently have in Silt.
Okay, that was my other, some separate. They moving out of Tim's, and I said, I don't think, I don't think they're moving out of Tim's, see, so that's where the confusion. And like I say, I read the sign, I have no idea what it was, whatever it meant, so. And I get asked every day, so it's like, I just was curious. So it's going to be a restaurant, too, then?
It's going to be a restaurant and like a fresh butcher market.
Okay.
They're going to use the same name and just add a two at the end.
They're, I'm not sure exactly how that works, because their business in Carbondale is also named La Placita, so they're going to have to figure out the copyright of that name or the trademark of that name with other people using it.
It's going to be kind of like the one on the, on the railroad and the bypass. There's a restaurant and a meat market in the back of that one, that makes it a restaurant, so it'll be the same thing, okay?
Yep.
All right, like I said, now I can answer, I just didn't know.
That'd be great when you put La Placita into Google Maps.
Add a couple two.
If it's great, there's two liquor stores, two La Placitas, two dollar stores, two hotels.
They seem to do doubles.
Three gas stations. Should change our town name to Twoville. Well, one isn't a town, but anyway.
Dos, dos, dos.
Yeah.
Well, at least it's a restaurant for breakfast.
Sounds a worldy.
Right now, I gotta go to Newcastle Rifle for breakfast, so I don't care what it is.
Yeah, they do pretty good in Newcastle.
Okay, that was my question.
Just a heads up, as it relates to the hiring schedule, I am going to be out of the country from May the sixth through May the tenth, and I know that overlaps with some of these interview slash selection dates. Going to be traveling for work.
Six to ten?
Six to ten, I'll probably leave a day or two early and come back a day or two later, because I'm hoping to do some skiing.
Unacceptable.
That's because you haven't been there.
Okay, well, any questions or comments you have for applicants before then, if you can get them to the rest of us?
Absolutely.
We can relay them on.
Eight hundred resumes to go through, so there'll be plenty.
There'll be lots of you, kind of.
Tons of applicants. You're going to be like, wow, that's a lot of people.
I was just looking, because I'm going to be gone the twentieth, the meeting for the twenty-second. There won't be nothing much going on there, I'm going to be in Africa, so.
Nice.
Not skiing, I presume?
No. So the twenty-second, I just didn't even look at that, so, okay.
Okay.
I'm good, shit.
That was it for me.
That's it? Okay. Well, Nicole's here. Do we have any update on grants or anything for the Anderson property?
We do not, I've started the process of submitting for the Brownsfield Grant to help us evaluate what needs to take place over there.
Okay.
And we'll get that submitted and then start going through the process to better understand what needs, what needs to take place right now, we just don't know.
All right. I just noticed that while no one's living there, it's still being, is a cat haven where people are feeding the cats, so it's not helping the situation any with that going on, so.
It's a petting zoo.
It's, yeah. Other than that, I've got nothing else. Do we have an executive session for administrator search?
We do not need to do that, we, we noticed that early.
Okay.
Just so we'd have it on there in case there was some need to have that during the interim administrators' conversation.
Okay. Everyone okay with not having an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
I want more.
Okay. Are there any other items of business, otherwise the next item on the agenda is adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Brittenall to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Seifert, all is in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimously.